Meeting with public comment. So if anyone has any comments to give, please come up, give your name, your address, and please limit your comments to three minutes in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. Is anyone here for public comment? Mr. Dines, do we have anyone online?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Did anyone receive correspondence? Okay, I will close public comment and we will move on to outside agency presentations. We will start with the Fredericksburg SPCA, Ms. Melanie Johnson and Ms. Lori Webb.
Good evening, and thank you for giving us this opportunity to be here tonight. My name is Lori Webb. Hi. My name is Lori Webb, and I am in my first month as the new executive director of the Fredericksburg SPCA. I regret to say that I am currently doing the organization a bit of a disservice because I am not yet qualified to really speak about the programs. However, I will tell you that I have seen, what I have seen is really an amazing group of individuals, smart, dedicated professionals who are committed to providing quality services to their community. And during my short four, three and a half weeks, I need more than two hands now to count the number of families that have come through our door needing help, providing supplies, resources for their family pets, and also the same number of individuals coming through needing help with rehoming. Rehoming whether it's because they have to find new rental housing and rental units allowing pets are not readily available, or other economic situations. I understand that funding for some of these programs may not have been a priority in the past, and thinking this through as the new director, it dawned on me that that could be because you don't know us, and we haven't taken the opportunity to really introduce ourselves and engage. I just think that having that opportunity to actually see the level of service and what we're doing for the families in conjunction with the other social service programs out there may make a difference. So I would like to introduce Melanie Johnson. So Melanie is just one of the many professionals at the SPCA who's working hard to help our programs succeed.
Yeah, hi, thanks for having us. I just wanted to kind of walk through our programs and just kind of introduce you to the things that we're doing at the SPCA and, you know, connect that to what's happening here in King George. So this year, okay, this year is a really special year for us. It's our 80th anniversary. So since 1943, we've been serving our region through our mission to eliminate all animal suffering and animal homelessness. We do this through leadership, education, and most importantly, action. And so our essential work is, there we go, our essential work provides life-saving care to animals throughout the region and to the families who need this assistance. According to a report published by the NIH, pet ownership positively contributes to psychological health of humans, particularly in older adults, and has been found to reduce a sense of isolation and loneliness. And at the SPCA, our mission is to end all animal suffering. Our mission to end all animal suffering is really rooted in both our love for animals and also our compassion for the humans who embrace them as members of their family. We were here to share that we are more than just a shelter, and adoption isn't your only option. We have tons of programs and opportunities to help members of the community. Our life-saving work extends beyond just our intake operations and includes a lot of vital programs such as Safe Haven, which is a program that we have for those who are experiencing temporary housing transitions due to domestic abuse or other circumstances in which their housing may be in transition. Our People Empowered Through Support, we call it the Pets Program, was created to give people the support that they need to keep pets in the homes that already love them. We do this by reducing the financial burden associated with pet ownership by providing free pet food, supplies, resources, and even no-cost veterinary care for those families. We believe that financial hardship shouldn't stand in the way of keeping families together. And our community outreach and humane education programs, our volunteer programs, they all teach community members responsible pet ownership and also animal care. We hope to break that cycle of animal homelessness in the future. Last year, I'll just kind of really quickly go through some stats for you. We welcomed nearly 850 animals from agencies we partnered with specifically through the Commonwealth, so throughout the state, including municipal shelters that have not yet reached a no-kill status. We also helped 126 animals who were considered strays and found at large within the community. By diverting these animals from other municipal shelters, we're really alleviating the burden on our region's municipal shelters and providing a service that benefits all, you know, living beings in our community. Currently, let me skip ahead here. Currently, we're entering a really busy season for us, kitten season. Our foster coordinator, Jackie, and her team of foster volunteers who have donated more than 96,000 hours, we rely very heavily on volunteers, which is why funding, like, this is so critical for us. They're helping to train foster families and providing resources to the public on what to do when you find kittens. So just a timely little example of the things that we do. So to recap, we do a lot for the community and for our animals. And the reason why we do all this work is because it's making a difference. Each year, more than 90,000 animals are euthanized, and 900,000, I'm sorry, animals are euthanized. And, you know, we believe one animal euthanized because of space is too much. So we're really making progress, and in order to achieve a no-kill classification, shelters have to reach at least a 90% live release rate, and we're really proud to say that we're 96%, so we're well above that threshold. And we're working with other, like I said, localities to really help reduce that number for them as well. So through our dedication and compassionate care and our mission to end animal suffering, we're continuing to make progress and provide aid to localities that seek to close that life-saving gap. But we can't do it alone, and currently, less than 1% of our annual budget is funded through localities, yet our work is rooted almost exclusively here within the Planning District 16, five localities. Each year, we help thousands of families and animals with the support that they need to keep their beloved pets with their family and to help new families help find homes for homeless animals. Sorry. We estimate that there are nearly 380 households in King George County that are experiencing poverty and that are home to at least one animal. The need for programs like our Pets Program, Pet Pantry, Safe Haven, they're all in demand way beyond our capacity. And, you know, these community assistance programs really give families and individuals support that they need to advance their own economic mobility and really build healthier and happier communities. So we find it's really important to fund these programs. We hope that you'll consider supporting the Fredericksburg SPCA now and in the future. We would welcome you all to come and visit and take a look at our operations, get to know our staff and the animals, and really all of the services that we're providing to the community. So anybody has any questions?
Does anyone have any questions?
Yes, I do have a question, Mr. Chair.
Go for it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much for coming out this evening, your presentation. So on slide 16.
Is this the 16?
Yes, thank you very much. The statement, 5% of all families supported through our Pets Program are located in King George County, how, can you give us a number? How many is that for real?
It's about 60 families, because we serve, I guess, 800 and some, I don't know how the number off the top of my head, but it's about, yep, 60 families. So, and there's, you know, it's not for, honestly, for lack of resources, we're not able to really fill that gap of the 380 households that, you know, could qualify for that support.
We are at the point where our programs are in such demand that we are having to turn people away at times, depending on capacity and current staffing. But that's where we're seeking more stable funding, if you will, so that we can keep these growing. And we really would like you all to come out and visit us. It's amazing when you go in and tour the facility for the first time. The photographs that are in this presentation are all from our facility or animals that have been in our care, staff members, our vet clinic, which not only provides for the direct animals in our care, but we are able to provide affordable vet services to the surrounding counties for the various shelters and holding facilities.
Thank you. And then as a follow-up, how did you arrive at that estimate of nearly 380 households?
Yeah, using census data, so just reporting through the census.
They report pets to the census?
Oh, I'm sorry, the pet ownership, I thought you were talking about the population. Yeah, so it's, one of the resources that we use is Best Friends Network and Maddie's Fund. They publish findings all the time about the average pet ownership and the average American and, you know, like, I think they said one in, I don't have the statistic in front of me, but we just used our own research and came to that number from, based on the census data that we were given, yeah.
Okay, thank you. And then you're requesting $16,000 from King George County. Do you have the same dollar amount requested from the other localities in Planning District 16, or it varies?
No, yes, it varies, depending on, you know, particularly for the Pets Program, the opportunity that exists to fill that gap. So population plays a big role in that, and, yeah, it's not the same for the other localities.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Collins, you had a comment?
Yes, I do. Thanks for coming out. So every year at Budget Time, we ask just a small number of agencies to come out, and you all were my pick. I love dogs, cats not so much.
It's kids.
I think $16,000 is a drop in the bucket. Every household pretty much in King George has a dog and a gun. So King George loves dogs, and I think that $16,000 is extremely reasonable for the outside agency to ask for this. Thank you.
Ms. Binder, Mr. Stonehill, you have any questions? Okay. Well, thank you so much for coming out and providing the information.
You all have a very nice evening.
You as well. All right, we will have the Rappahannock Area Agency on Agency, Ms. Patricia Holland.
Thank you very much. I am Pat Holland, the Executive Director of Healthy Generations Area Agency on Aging, and thank you for the opportunity, Kathy, thank you for inviting me, to talk a little bit about Healthy Generations. The agency will celebrate its 50th year in 2025. We continue to evolve from an agency that began with only providing a noontime meal to one that truly believes in its mission to enhance the quality of life of all older citizens. Many people have the incorrect belief that as we age, we lose our value. I'm sure each one of you believes differently, and I know that my turning 60 next month will not stop me from continuing to be a productive citizen or having many more lively experiences. Within our region, the total economic contribution of older adults in 2022 equaled over $1,214 million. That comes from a study that was just recently done by the Department for Aging and Rehabilitative Services. Of this, over $600 million was earned income and close to $600 million were unpaid. These are unpaid contributions in family caregiving, caregiving for friends, as well as many volunteer opportunities. I've given you an impact report, which is in front of you in blue and green, and it looks at some of our services that we have provided to the entire Planning District and also specific to King George through COVID. We are now trying to get back to pre-COVID levels of service. But if you look at the impact report, one of the things that you'll see towards the top in the narrative is that Healthy Generations provided more than 17 times the number of meals to residents pre-COVID and post-COVID, 17 times the number of meals. Down in King George, you'll see we had a total of over 30,000 services given to King George residents. Pre-COVID, we were at about 7,600. We had 511 home-delivered meals in King George, and during the COVID time, over 18,000. I'm not going to go on with all of these numbers, you have them. I will say that we went from two clients with home-delivered meals to 34 at the height of COVID in King George. Throughout our region, we went from 48 clients to 871. We had, again, it was a 1700% increase. We have a small staff that does a tremendous job at making sure that all of our seniors get taken care of. You'll see some of the other programs that we have. We have van rides, we have our mobility auctions programs that gets folks from their homes to places within the region. They may be medical appointments, they may be fun appointments, they may be haircuts, going to the bank, grocery shopping. We have no charge for that program, so people that are disabled and those that are over 60 can get to where they need to go when they don't have transportation any other way. We have homemaker programs that do light housekeeping for frail elderly. Sounds like a very little program, but that is a program that can keep people in their homes aging in place. As we get older, as we get frailer, our shoulders don't want to vacuum, we can't get out and go to the grocery store, we have a hard time changing beds, doing laundry, and those are all things that our homemaker program can do. Our Socian Rec, we have senior cafes in all of the counties, and just the fact of getting out of the house, we can pick people up and bring them to the senior cafe. Social isolation is the equivalent of smoking 15 cigarettes a day. We don't want that. So what does the future bring, a society that is aging? In 2034, only 11 years from now, people aged 65 and over are expected to number 77 million, while children under 18 will be at about 76 and a half million. That's the first time it'll switch. The tables will turn, and we need to be prepared. If projections, pardon me, hold true, in 2030, King George County will have 30,000 residents, 6,000 of them will be 60 or over. In the recently completed Community Assessment Survey for older adults specific to Healthy Generation Service Area, about 74% of older residents rated their overall quality of life as good to excellent. That's a good thing. Most older residents were positive when thinking of this area as a place to retire, but only 44% indicated that their community valued older residents. According to this survey, and evident by waitlists and employee workloads, the older service network, our Agency on Aging's, while strong, are underscored, are under-resourced and unable to single-handedly meet the needs of the continuously growing population of older adults. Although community members feel that this area is a good place to live, the ratings given to certain aspects fall below state benchmarks. Housing, employment and finances, information and assistance, and productive activities have received lesser scores than other areas of the state. One thing that is always evident in surveys completed by older adults is that self-reported needs in older adults represent a conservative estimate due to the respondent's strong desire to feel and appear self-reliant. So many of the pieces of information that we are getting, the scores are probably much better or worse depending on what you're looking at. There are many opportunities to make this area a great place to grow older. These include better and more senior housing, better long-term care facilities, opportunities for senior social and recreational activities, the availability of adequate transportation, as well as many nutritional incentives from home-delivered meals to the Senior Farmers' Market Program, which I am smiling about because we talked about that in the back just a little while ago. And that will start in June. It's a brand-new program that the Agency on Aging is bringing. It has been covered through other parts of the state, the majority of the state will now be covered, but it will give qualified older citizens 60 and over with a certain income $50 worth of vouchers to spend at area farmers' markets, and we are very, very excited about that. Thank you for the time and energy that you give to each King George County resident and to make it a wonderful place to live. Thanks for the time you've given me tonight, and I ask that you consider this information when providing for those who are aging in King George County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holland, I appreciate it, the brief app. Did any board members or citizen advisors have any questions? Go for it, Ms. Binder.
Pat, as always, thank you for coming, and one of the reasons I had asked is just so you guys could hear what they do and, you know, the services, because I guess, you know, most people don't realize that we, you know, there's a lot of seniors in our population and it will continue to grow. So thank you, Pat, again, and your staff.
I appreciate that, thank you very much. Take care, thank you for what you do.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Next up, we have the Mental Health America of Fredericksburg, Ms. Barbara Barlow.
Like everyone else, I am grateful for this opportunity to speak before this group and further dive into what we do and have this opportunity. So I'm the Executive Director of Mental Health America of Fredericksburg. I'm going to lead with some of the things that we've been doing since we had submitted the application for locality funding. I'm going to start with, well, first I want to say, we've been around since 1955. We look for gaps in the delivery of mental health services across PD-16, create unique programs that meet those needs. Every single dollar that comes into Mental Health America, even though we're an affiliate of the national organization, everything stays here locally. So, so the gaps that we are addressing, we have four signature programs, suicide prevention education, where our focus right now is on teens, so senior visitors, where we partner with Healthy Generations. We have helpline, which I'll dive into a little bit more, and then we have support services. So the first one I want to address is suicide prevention education. So we are robustly engaged with the local schools here, both the middle school and the high school. I don't know if you're aware of, but the highest rate of suicide ideation, suicide attempts, and self-harm now, the fastest rate of growth is ages 13 to 16. So we are, as the CDC had indicated, in the middle of a mental health crisis for youth, not just the general population, but particularly so with youth. So with that, we present Signs of Suicide, which is an evidence-based program that teaches kids the signs of suicide to look out for themselves and their friends, and then we encourage kids to go to a trusted adult. So we present those in your school. We presented at the high school all ninth graders, and from that presentation, on the first day, we had 22 kids who indicated that they needed to talk to a counselor. We presented at the eighth grade level, and we are scheduled before the end of the school year to present to all seventh graders. So we do partner and provide follow-up, but principally, it is them self-disclosing to their counselors. That follow, oh, and I also wanted to share, we used to charge $200 per class to present that, we charge nothing now. We are in the middle of a mental health crisis, and the board voted to waive all fees. We also absorb the cost of the licensing for Signs of Suicide, which would cost King George County $3,000 for the two schools where we present each year. So those are costs that we are absorbing and have absorbed, but moving forward, we need the localities to actually contribute so we can maintain those programs in the school. Then, for example, in the high school, one of the kids that I was aware of, because they contacted Mental Health America, their parents could not find a mental health provider. So our waitlists here are sometimes six months long, even if a kiddo is experiencing suicide ideation. So what we did with our helpline program is found some, a provider that would take that child immediately. But let me explain about helpline, because it's confusing to some people. They think it's a crisis line. Our helpline was started probably about 15 years ago because this particular area had a crisis back then. We did not have enough mental health providers even back then to address the increasing needs in our community. So since the pandemic, it's been worse. So helpline is a service to the community, it is not replicated anywhere else in the state, it is unique to PD-16 and Mental Health America Fredericksburg. We proactively stay in touch with mental health providers across our region. We know what insurance they accept, what services they provide, whether they're accepting new clients, and if they have waitlist. So that if somebody is searching for a mental health provider in that small window of time where they know that they want help and they're open to it, how many phone calls are people going to make and hear no and keep on trying? So we found in the past that people make five phone calls and they give up. So when that happens, somebody's at a tipping point, reaching out for help, and then they give up. And we did not want that to happen 12 years ago, we don't want that to happen today. So people, if you know of anybody who's searching for a mental health provider, just give them Mental Health America Fredericksburg's phone number, ask for the helpline, and we will work with them and help them get an appointment. And since the pandemic, where there are waitlists, we also have another service that we've added where if you are waitlisted and you are looking and contact Mental Health America, we will contact you weekly, daily, whatever it takes, so you feel connected to the community and you don't lose hope. So that is additional service that we are doing. I also want to share with you, we are helping the health department correct their numbers because they have calculated our access to care and availability of services based on the number of licensed providers that are licensed in our area. So because we are proactively in touch with these providers, we can correct their numbers and say, more than half of the providers that we have are not accepting new clients. So it's making it even more difficult for people to find a mental health provider. So when we got a call from a mom after a presentation of Signs of Suicide, and they said, our healthcare insurance, there's a waitlist with the providers that accept that insurance, and it's six months out. So that's the type of service we provide so that not just kids, but adults, anybody who lives through PD, in PD-16, we help them at the point where they are most vulnerable. So we also have senior visitors, and I think we just support the work of Healthy Generations. Pat had mentioned that isolation and loneliness is comparable to smoking cigarettes toward your life expectancy. Senior visitors is matching a trained volunteer with a senior who is isolated and lonely. And some of those relationships that have been curated with Mental Health America Fredericksburg have existed have existed for eighteen, twenty years, um, and provide a valuable service supporting seniors in the community. The one program that was not listed in the application is Support Services. The reason why is because we had, um, stopped that program during the pandemic and we're scaling that back up. And essentially, that's, um, peer services and working with mental health providers that will provide group support and therapy to, um, to kids. So the peer-to-peer support services, peer-to-peer, is, um, the state of Virginia is recognizing that as a profession. They have a certification program that you can go through seventy-two hours' worth of training and five hundred hours of direct services before you can sit for your credentialing exam. So we have people here locally who have gone through the seventy-two hours of training. They cannot find a place to get their five hundred hours completed. And Mental Health America is providing the oversight, the supervision to provide that opportunity so we can increase across our community those, um, peer support. Currently, we have a peer support group that is working and with parents who have children with diagnosed mental health challenges, recognizing that the parents have their own need for support when they are supporting their children through their journey with a mental health challenge. Additionally, we're starting a Support Group for Grief, um, people who are dealing with grief. And in Caroline County, we all have, also have started Community Conversations where we're doing presentations on mental health. Here in King George, it holds a special place for me. I raised my kids here. So when I drive here, um, then it's like coming home. And, um, I have really endeavored, as the new Executive Director, I've been here for a little less than ten, two years, to increase the services that this county receives from Mental Health America.
Thank you, Ms. Barlow. I appreciate all the information. Uh, did anyone have any questions or comments they would like to Mr. Mr. Holland?
Thank you for coming out.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you for having me.
So I spent eight years on the school board, and I found that especially youth counseling is like nearly impossible to find. I didn't know that resource that you're speaking of is available. I wonder, so before TDO happens, do you have associations with the law enforcement? Because they meet a lot of people in crisis that aren't at the TDO level yet. Young people and adults. So how is, how is that relationship?
Well, I, I've known people that have been on the Sheriff's Department when I lived here. Former, you know, um, head of the Sheriff's Department. Um, also with, I chaired the CPMT here in King George when that program first started. So I'm very familiar with the processes and the organizations that work here in King George. I would say, um, I think our relationship is good with law enforcement. I am a former police officer, so I bring that to the table, too. So I do recognize what you're saying in terms of Virginia is transitioning from a model where the Sheriff's Department, police officers, would not necessarily be the first responders in a mental health crisis. And I do recognize that we're transitioning, or you're not talking about that.
I wasn't talking about that at all.
Okay.
So, um, sheriff's office, state police show up at someone's house. They're not, like I say, they're not TDO, Bill, but they're in, they're in need of mental health services. And most law enforcement officers don't know that you exist. They give them the number so that they can reach out, so you can, they can find a provider, so they can, uh, do these things.
Well, and I do admit that Helpline needs to be more, uh, robustly marketed. For example, I did a public service announcement with, um, Alpha Media Group, and they did it across all of, and they put it out across all of their platforms. That one public, um, announcement resulted in an increase from two hundred calls a, a month to over five hundred. So, and we've ramped up and now consistently have five hundred, um, people that we connect with a provider every month. Um, and that's gonna continue to grow. And I can certainly reach out to the Sheriff's Department here to make sure that they know of that resource. I think that's good input that you've just given me.
And and the state police in that, in this region, so there's, um, four different area offices, and they would, being a former police officer, I would have loved to have this information.
And I will also reach out, not to prep or to prep the CSV here, that's here. They also have a program where they teach law enforcement about mental health challenges and, uh, ID and DD disabilities and the proper communication techniques. And so that might also be an appropriate place to disseminate that information to law enforcement as far as the the Helpline is concerned.
Well, I, I think the Helpline would be a valuable a- asset to those people on the front line, even fire and rescue who, quite often will encounter folks before, well, they're ready for assistance, but they don't know where to turn.
I hear you.
And you call, you're right, like the young people, their parents, I've heard it a thousand times. I've called this provider and that provider and this provider, and I can't find a provider. So to to cut down on that, um, you say that you have providers available that are taking patients. I mean, that, that's a, that's a huge asset for the schools.
Well, we are in the process of reaching out to all family, um, physicians and have a family practice to let them know about the Helpline. And those materials could be equally appropriate for law enforcement. And so it's now on my to-do list.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Barlow.
All right, thank you.
All right, next up, we have the Virginia Community Food Connections, Ms. Candace Armstrong.
Hello, how are you? Can you hear me okay? Uh, my name is Candace Armstrong. I'm the Executive Director for a small nonprofit called Virginia Community Food Connections. You may have seen us out at the farmer's market before. We are a food access nonprofit. We focus on connecting vulnerable families and individuals with fresh, local, and whole foods. One of the ways that we do that is by offering nutrition incentives at the farmer's markets. Um, that's our kind of longest-standing program and what we've been known for, uh, quite a bit, even though we're very small. We have a staff of two and a half, maybe almost three people. But we've been at the King George Farmer's Market for just over, for about twelve years, even before we were incorporated as a nonprofit. We, we have, oh, we have nine markets, or we did last year. We, um, we're in all of Planning District sixteen and including Prince William County. So nutrition incentives really are just a way for us to try to help encourage people to buy healthier food. We offer a thirty-dollar match for thirty dollars spent in SNAP benefits at the market. So folks can come every week. They can spend as much as they want, and from their SNAP benefits, we will match up to thirty. So they come and spend thirty bucks, they get sixty in fresh food, um, that they take home and feed to their families. Last year, two, in two thousand and twenty-two, over, across all of our programs throughout the region, um, we distributed over three hundred and forty-six thousand dollars in fresh food. Part of that, half of that, is SNAP benefits that we're bringing access to farmers and producers that are here locally. And so by, uh, by bringing that service to the market, um, we allow those farmers and producers to accept SNAP benefits. And then we're also bringing those incentive dollars, um, to them as well and making them accessible. So three hundred and forty-six thousand, um, and serving over thirty-four thousand people. Now, I know what your question is. What about King George? How do we serve people in King George? And admittedly, we know that our numbers, that our outreach, that are, um, that those we're serving in King George is a smaller number. Right? It's a smaller piece of that puzzle. Um, and we're very committed as an organization. Our board is very committed. We just did a strategic plan, um, actually to work on building capacity to do outreach in the rural areas that we serve, which includes King George and Caroline. So in King George, at the King George Market, um, we distributed over thirteen thousand dollars. So it's a smaller piece of that three hundred and forty-six. But we're still very proud of that. I'm very glad that we offer that service, and we're very excited to begin doing it all again on April twenty-ninth, which is the day that the King George Farmer's Market opens again. So again, um, smaller numbers that are served here, but a huge potential and a, a very strong commitment from our organization, um, to really continue to partner with more organizations to get to know people, just like so many, like a couple of people. I'm, I'm actually still pretty new to my position, although it's been about a year and a half, but I feel like I still have, I can still say that I'm new. So, but I'm really personally committed to, um, getting to know you, to getting to know all the people at King George, and to, um, continuing to push forward our mission, which is to connect people with good, healthy food, um, that we believe everybody deserves access to. So we have another really awesome program that I wanna share with you, too, and it's called Farm to Pantry. So that's a program that is in the process of being expanded this year. It's a way that we, um, we work with farmers to sort of purchase in bulk produce to then get to food pantries that are serving people directly. And so this is the way that we're actually, um, getting more produce out there to people that need it that's outside of the market, because we know that there are, but there are barriers, um, to getting to the market. You have to have a car, or you have to have a friend, or a neighbor, or somebody that will take you there. And so we understand that, just like for so many other social service programs, it's not realistic that everybody would come to the market to be able to spend their SNAP benefits. Some people don't have SNAP benefits to spend in the first place. So we really wanna make sure that we're able to do that. And so King George is one of the, one of the areas, one of the localities that we're really excited to extend that Farm to Pantry program and work with local pantries here, um, and find ways to really serve underserved and low-income and high-need areas.